Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente, Wednesday, March 20, 2024, here at the San Clemente City Hall. Tonight, we have a lot of special people here, and I've asked one of them to please lead us in the pledge. It's our former mayor, council member, and planning commissioner, Kathy Ward.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flower of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the roll call, we have Commissioner McCann, Vice Chair Scott Camp, who is here from Colorado. Sorry, Steve Camp, who's here from Colorado this morning, so hopefully you'll hang in there. And Commissioner Crandall, missing. We have Commissioner Prescott Loeffler, our Gary McCacken, and we also are missing Brent Davis. We have a very special order of business tonight. Our recording secretary, Eileen White, is retiring as our recording secretary after 31 years of service to the City of San Clemente in this position, which is why we have all our guests tonight. We have, I want to acknowledge, we have got past mayors, city council, past city council members, and many former planning commissioners who came tonight to wish you off and wish you well. And I just want to thank them all for coming. And what I'd like to do is invite Jonathan to join me in the front with Eileen, and we're going to make a little presentation. And now I'm going to invite all the commissioners, present and future, past, sorry, not future, present and past, to join for a photo. Okay. So, Eileen, on behalf of the city staff and the planning commission, I want to wish you a very happy retirement. Thirty-one years. It's a long time to be doing anything, let alone public service. So, thank you. We had many well wishers tonight, you know, talking about how you provide a lot of stability, a lot of leadership, and a lot of people were very grateful for that. So, my memories of you are basically attention to detail, our minutes were right every single time, no corrections. You kept us honest on our motions to make sure they're accurate and right. So, you'll be missed, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. So, thank you and congratulations. We've got a commendation from the City of San Clemente, which I will read. Basically, reads as a city resolution, whereas the planning commission of the City of San Clemente recognizes the importance of dedicated individuals whose exceptional service contribution significant contributes significantly to the success and efficiency of commissions, and whereas Eileen White has served as the recording secretary of the planning commission since July 6, 1993, consistently providing reliable, accurate, and professional support to the commission, and whereas Eileen White has exhibited unwavering dedication, attention to detail, and committed to excellence in her role as recording secretary, contributing significantly to the effectiveness of the planning commission. Now for, therefore, I, on behalf of the planning commission, and Jonathan Lightfoot, on the city planner, on behalf of the city of San Clemente, we want to present you with this, and thank you for your commitment and professionalism for all those years. And we have a card for you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. And then I want to invite everybody else down. And now, get all the other, everybody else.
I'm gonna get George Buell.
Yeah, other people from the back?
Yeah.
So, where in Scotland are you going to be sitting?
Uh, Glasgow. I'm just gonna go for a couple lines, see how it is. But I wouldn't mind at Glasgow House.
Tall ones in the back, short ones in the front.
That's what I mean.
Camera, get the picture of everybody.
Wait, 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 wait. Am I too tall? Don't, don't hide, don't care.
The tallest in the front, right?
Kathy Ward rubbed my shoulder. It was great.
I have so many, that if your eyes are closed, we'll find one to Photoshop.
No, just thank you, everyone. It's been wonderful. It's a perfect job for me, and I love this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again to all of the former commissioners that came out to wish Eileen well tonight. And Chair Protem McCacken has joined the, joined our meeting. All right. Moving on to item five, the minutes. We've got A and B. A is minutes from the regular study session of the planning commission from March 6, 2024. We have an updated version of that on the dais. That's the one we're gonna, we're gonna act on. Does anybody have any corrections to that or a motion? I'll move approval of the minutes from the regular study session, March 6. It's been seconded by our vice chair, Protem. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And then 5B are the minutes from the regular meeting of the planning commission, March 6. Any comments? Any motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, thank you. Items, yes. Did you have something, Commissioner Crandall?
I did. Now that I look, I circled it in the regular study session. It says Chair McCann.
Yeah, that's been corrected. That's what I called to your attention, is that's the one, the one on the dais. Yeah, that's the updated one. Okay. Item six is oral or written communications from the members of the audience that may wish to address the commission on any item not on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wants to address the commission on a non-agenda item? See none. Item seven is our consent calendar. There is no items there tonight. Item eight is public hearings. We have three of them. I am going to seek the indulgence of my colleagues to reorder them. There are three public hearings tonight, and we have one of them that is recommended by staff that we continue it, which is number C. And that one is the public hearing project 23-083 Sea Cliff Hotel and Restaurant at 402 Pasadena Court. The staff has requested and recommending that this be continued to the meeting of April 17. So, there is no staff report, but it is noticed as on the agenda. So, I'm going to open the public hearing for this item and ask if there's any members of the public that wanted to speak to this. See none. I'm going to leave the public hearing open, and I'm going to move that we continue this project 23-083 Sea Cliff Hotel and Restaurant at 402 Pasadena Court to April 17, 2024. Thank you, Vice Chair Camp. It's pretty straightforward, but is there any discussion? Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of continuing this item to the 17th?
Aye.
And the opposed, it passes. Item is continued. Great, thanks. Thought that just would make it easier. So, item, back to item A. This is a public hearing on the Pronto Caccina Italiano 2021 Avenida Del Mar Suite B. It's a request for an ABC license to, for the sale of full-range alcohol. I will now open the public hearing. I believe we have a staff report from Jonathan, do we not?
Yes, Chair.
Great.
Good evening, planning commissioners. John Champa, contract planner for the requested application, Pronto Caccina Italiana, which is a request for a conditionally used permit for the sale of full-range alcohol. Just to give a little context here, property is located at 221 Avenida Del Mar in Unit B. It's zoned within the mixed-use and architectural overlay districts within the city, and its current use is a restaurant. A little bit more background on this is that the restaurant itself has been in operation for over a year with the established beer and wine license, which has operated successfully with no issues identified by code enforcement or the sheriff's department. The suite was also previously occupied by an Italian restaurant, which was operating for several decades. So, the request before you again is for full-range alcohol sales for onsite consumption. It would be It would be Monday through Sunday, 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There would be no proposed modifications to the interior of the suite, and it would not require any additional parking. The application has been reviewed by the business, I'm sorry, the building department, as well as code compliance, the Sheriff's Department, as well as ABC, and they have not identified any issues with their requested application. Here we have, on the right-hand side, the existing layout of the restaurant, and again, no modifications would be proposed, the existing bar would remain in its place, as well as the seating, and an exterior photo of the business. Again, the operations would be limited to the extended sale of full-range alcohol from beer and wine, with the specified times from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There would be no live entertainment or amplified sound included as part of this application, that if proposed by the applicant, that would be a separate application to the Planning Commission. So in conclusion, the application is in compliance with all the city's zoning regulations and development standards, as well as the general plan policies, and is recommending the project be exempt per SEQA requirements, and staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions of approval in your draft resolution. So that concludes staff's presentation, staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there questions? There are no questions, does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
No, I just wanted to say hi. My name is Adrian.
Well, now I invite you up to this podium, and then we could all hear you. Feel free to, whatever you want to say.
No, it was a very super quick thing. So first of all, thank you very much. The, the, the slide said off-site.
It's onsite.
It's onsite.
Yeah.
That's, that's all, that's very quick.
Okay. Any discussion from the commission on this? Staff is recommending approval. Are there any concerns about the staff recommendations or suggestions?
I can move approval of this item.
Okay. One second. So you are approving staff recommendations, Commissioner McCann?
Yes, and proposed conditions in the resolution.
The determination that it's categorically exempt from SEQA?
Yes.
Great, and that's included in your second?
Right.
All right. We have a motion, a second, to approve staff recommendations. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Pending a, what is it, 14 days?
Ten days.
Ten days. Someone may, may appeal, but other than that, then, once you get past the 10 days, your conditional use permit will be granted. Congratulations. All right. That takes us to item 8B, which is also a public hearing on a conditional use permit, 23-440, at 647 Camino de los Maris, Suite 200, Greenside Golf, and their request to establish an indoor golf simulator. Jonathan, you are here for this report as well.
Yes, Chair.
Great.
Thank you. So again, yes, this is a request from Greenside Golf for a conditional use permit. Just to give a little context on their request and its location, it's located at 67, 647 Community de los Maris in Suite 200. It's located within the Community Commercial 4 zoning designation. Its use designation is amusement center, which is for the establishment of the golf simulator. So the request before the Planning Commission is for, to allow this use. Just to give a little background on their request, it is a membership-based business. They primarily offer the golf simulator to, do, for their members, however, they do also offer private golf lessons, as well as golf clinics, club fitting, merchandise, league tournaments, and corporate events. There's two simulators proposed, and each simulator offers an allowance of four golfers per bay, so you're looking at a maximum of eight occupants at any given time. The proposed hours of operation are weekly, 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM. And then the parking requirement for this proposed use is 1.25 spaces per tee, so we're looking at two, two and a half spaces for the proposed use, which is an overall net reduction of the previous office use of 2.64 parking spaces, so it improves the non-conforming conditions for the site. Here we've got a floor plan of the proposed space, as well as an example of the golf simulator bay. So as you can see, the suite is very limited in terms of its proposed improvements, and it's really just the bays. However, there is some soundproofing proposed as part of that, which I'll discuss at a later slide. The business operations for the expansion of that is that the access to the facility, it would be through a digital access control system. They would also have cameras to monitor the facility at all times, and the employees would be onsite for new members' orientations, as well as any league or corporate events, to ensure compliance in, in operations. And there's also condition of approval 7.5, to ensure that that is the case. Noise was also evaluated as part of the application, and so the suite does, is an end suite on the building, however, it does share a wall with Thai Massage on the second floor, and is above the Flower San Clemente Company, so it does share some walls, and so the applicants were very sensitive to that, and spoke to their neighbors, and let them know what was, what they were proposing. Also, as part of the operations, they, and the simulator manufacturers, they provide standard specifications in terms of the noise and what, what's to be expected there. So in addition to that, in abundance of caution, the applicants are also proposing to provide additional sand attenuation to the shared wall, as well as some floor mats to, to further reduce any potential noise. So in addition to all of that, condition 7.8 has been added to the resolution to, if there are any sand issues that arise, that are at odds with the city's noise ordinance, then the applicants would be required to address that to the satisfaction of the, of the city planner. So with that, the project is in compliance with all of the applicable development standards, as well as the general plan policies, and staff is recommending the project be exempt from the requirements of SEQA, and is recommending approval of the application subject to the conditions of approval in your draft resolution. So that concludes staff's presentation, staff and the applicants are available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Let's start with questions to you, and then we'll invite the applicant up. You've got something? Scott, any questions? Okay, Steve?
The parking ratio, 1.25 per tee, is that the zoning ordinance for that type of a use?
For, that's, that's the parking regulation for a driving range.
Oh, for a driving range?
Correct, so that's what, that's what staff utilized for this.
Okay. So there's, how many bays? Two of them? No, four? Just two. Okay. All right. So I think I saw somewhere in here that there's gonna be an employee and a customer per bay at any given time? Is that true?
So when the oper, when the facility is running, in many cases, and the applicants can speak to this, but in many cases, there, there will not be anyone onsite, it would only be typically for a special event, so they would have a remote access based on their scheduled time, and it would only be the, the users, or the members that would be there during the, the operations.
Okay, so you rotate in, or is it just one person there for? And this all may be in here, but I didn't notice it. One person, like, per hour, or how's, how's it work, you know, for, for the bays? I'm trying to get to, to, you know, what, how many parking spaces are really gonna be required? Because you only have two.
Yeah, let me just jump in, because I see where he's going. The report does indicate that there can be up to four people participating per bay, so a total of eight. And you're, you're saying, well, there's gonna be two and a half parking requirements for possibly eight, eight users. So I think what you're trying to get at is, can you square that? The number of participants being maybe as upwards of eight, but only two spots required?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah.
Correct, yeah, so.
I think that was what you're going for, right?
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. No, and staff did look at that and discussed internally of what was the appropriate parking ratio for this, given the nature of the use and its applicability to the driving range. That was determined to be a satisfactory parking regulation there, however, to note that if an office use were to be there, it would be requiring approximately five parking spaces. So if the parking ratio included in the staff report is seen to be insufficient, there is a little bit of a buffer there to be a net zero gain in terms of the parking for the, for the use. And, yeah, that's probably.
How long has this space been vacant?
I believe it's been two years, based on the information from the real estate agent operator.
Okay, so I don't want to belabor this, but the, the driving range, is that really the way it works? I haven't been on a driving range lately. You can have up to four people per bay, is that how that works? I mean, just to try to correlate those.
I guess it really depends on the driving range, you know, and the, the users, right? If you're a group, it could be more than that, or it could be less than that, just depends, but.
Okay, so that's an average, because that's the, that's the ratio you're using. It just seems, it seems light, you know, on the number of parking spaces. It's a pretty big space, you could get that many, you know, eight people in there, and obviously you want to be successful, so, you know, probably not people coming carpooling, you know, to a, to a driving range like that. I'm, I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to it, but I'm just having trouble, you know, seeing how that works. I mean, we have a total of 100 and, over 177 spaces that are shared in that center. And is it, so where's the line? Do you have a, do you have a site plan or an aerial view, John, that shows?
Page five.
I'm sorry?
Page five. On the Greenside Golf Indoor Golf Studio, page five.
Okay.
Oh, there, 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 yeah, that, that page. Are the yellow lines property lines? The yellow lines, those are property?
Yeah, it might be skewed with the aerial photo. I believe the, the parking spaces immediately adjoining the building to the, we'll call it north or left-hand side, are also associated with the, the space, so they have parking along both building frontages.
Okay, so it's just all along the front edge of that building? That's not 177 spaces? It's all of, it's its entire center, right? I think it's, so you could park.
The park, the parking demand for the building itself is 177 spaces, based on the, the mix of uses that are there, as well as the allocation of uses for the vacant suites assumed as office.
Okay.
So there's a number of office medical spaces that are there, as well as standard office, and several restaurants.
I think, for clarity, 177 is at capacity of the center what would be required, based on parking ordinance. What's provided by the center is 142 spots, so there is a parking stall deficit of about 35 spots. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not, well, the, that space was vacant. And the operating hours here, I'm looking on, you know, page four. It says 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday through Sunday. So that's it?
So, so they're looking to operate from 5:00 in the morning all the way to midnight?
Yeah.
Okay. 5:00 AM in the morning till midnight, okay. So, yeah, that's a lot of hours.
It's a lot of hours, yeah. A lot of half-hours, that's a good thing.
I've been, I've been in that center a lot, and during the day, it's tough to find parking. You know, sometimes you have to wait for somebody to leave, so, I don't know. I'm concerned about adding potentially, you know, eight, even if it says 2.5 spaces, eight cars. If it's, we want it to be successful. And I, I'll just leave it at that. I'm concerned.
Let's, let's just see if there's other questions for staff, and then let's bring the applicant up and have that conversation. Gary, do you have anything? Art?
Jonathan. Were there, there was justification, obviously, when the businesses were in that space, correct? There was justification for the park, and that was five spaces?
Yes, for the, for the previous office use.
So it would be no change in the existing parking if we said they're allocated five spaces?
Correct.
Yeah, but, I mean, we can hold up for discussion, how do you allocate?
Yeah, they're, they're first come, first served.
It's been you, if we say, no, you can't have this, by right, they can go in and have an office and use five spaces.
I get that, but they're not an office.
Let's do this. Did you have other questions for staff? Okay.
Something.
You do?
Yeah.
And then, well, I'd like to bring the applicant up, and then we can kind of have the parking discussion with them.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the applicant, if the applicant can address something when they make their comments, but I also wanted to invite the people from Pronto Italian. It won't be rude if you guys leave, just so you know. Okay, so, you don't have to stay here and listen about golf. If the applicants can, well, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. And we're not encouraging you to leave, but we're giving you options. Just if the applicants, when they do address us, if they can, I'd love to hear what their estimate of, you know, usage is gonna be, time, when they think most people are gonna be using it, that's all.
Okay, very good. Okay, so at this point in the public hearing, we are gonna invite the applicant to come up and speak to their application. You've got 10 minutes to make your presentation, and then we're gonna obviously ask you to stick around for some questions, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. First of all, thanks to the commission and staff for reviewing our application. I'm, I'm Josh Austin, and, and this is Dan Benson, so we're the founders of this Greenside Golf Company. We don't really, I don't, I don't have to make a statement, I'd, if it's okay, just kind of address some of the feedback and the questions that we've got, particularly around the parking. I know, as, as, as a, listening to the discussion, I wanted to call out a few things, maybe to address the question around upper, like, our peak hours. I think that'll help address some of the parking questions, too. So our, we have these business hours from 5, proposed business hours from 5:00 AM to midnight, because we suspect and we plan to have our kind of peak business hours for our members would actually be before typical business hours. A lot of our potential members, you know, work full-time, have, have day jobs, and, and if any of you are golfers, you kind of know it's tough to kind of squeeze that in throughout the day, and so part of our value proposition is to, to invite members to kind of take advantage of, of the early morning hours, and maybe hours a little later in the evening, which hopefully will kind of address some of the parking concerns, too. But in regards specifically to the parking, we typically, our business caters to, to members who would join our membership program, and, and would use this facility more as like a, a practice, a place to come and, and practice their golf, and to, you know, try to improve their, their game versus kind of having parties or, or big events. We anticipate that most of our users would use this individually, so we anticipate each bay would typically, on average, usually only have one person. And so usually at most in the space, we would have two occupants, two, two members at a time, with the exception of, for their first time, Dan or myself or one of our employees will be there to kind of give them an orientation, so that would maybe be in addition. Dan or one of our employees would be there in addition. The max number of eight that was called out in, in, in the proposal here, typically, you know, golf is done in foursomes. If you've played golf, that's kind of typically what they do, is they send golfers out in foursomes, so that's generally when you. So that's generally when you golf in a group, you would golf in, in a group of four. And so that's where we kind of dictated this, this number of eight. And we, we plan to, to host any events that would have more than the typical two, you know, one person per bay. Those events where maybe we might have a small group of ma, of eight people, those would happen, will dictate that those, those events or that size of a group couldn't take place until after 5:00 PM. That's the, that's our proposed plan. Dan, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so Josh and I, we visited a number of these golf simulator locations ourselves. And typically what we saw was each bay really only had one or two individuals at any given time. And again, this was multiple, multiple bays, multiple times during the day. And so that's where we feel fairly confident that that one to two is probably what you're going to see. And so we, we feel very, you know, pretty good about the, being able to support that. And even ourselves going over there multiple times throughout the day, you know, eating at Full Moon Sushi or the Italian restaurant. It gets a little packed during the, during the lunch hours, but one to two, again, is what we were expecting per bay.
And then one last thing that I want to call, I'm trying to think of what the question was. It escapes me right now, but yeah, I think just to echo, you know, I think any, any larger group, we, we would stipulate that those groups can't really occupy that space until later in the evening, and then in that event, they, there would be an employee on site as well.
Yeah, and, and one, one final comment on, on allowing golfers to come to our space. We will regulate who can sign up for the available booking times, and, and their access to the suite will be controlled based on that booked slot. So it's not like it will be an open door policy if myself or Josh wanted to book a time at even 1:00 PM, right? It, it would be very controlled, and we would only allow a specific number during those operation hours.
And, and I remember now the question, I think there was a question around the typical times. So a, a member could reserve essentially an hour at a time. So each member would only really be able to book the space for an hour at a time. And like Dan said, it's, it's very controlled because we kind of control access to the building. It's locked until they're given access. So we can kind of control that number as well.
So how do you, how do you control, how do you control it? Is there like a sign up online, or?
Yeah, so it, it's a great question. It's, it's part of a software package. So this, this type of indoor golf simulator, for anyone that golfs, you'll, you'll kind of, you, you may know that golf's seen like a huge increase in the last, you know, particularly four years, but in the last decade, it's grown over fifty percent. And indoor golf in particular, off-course golf, has grown like forty-eight percent in the last four years. And so this is a business, a type of business that's like, that's been built up over the last four years to meet the needs of, of golfers. And really, I think this, this, this is really just to kind of help meet that, that demand of, of golfers, that golfers need.
Yeah, so we've, and, and we've also picked a vendor that's like a, you know, their best-in-class software service. They provide access to twenty-four seven gyms, as well as indoor golf simulators. So this is, again, very much part of what they do, cameras, digital, you know, door access control, and all of that is based on a member getting access to a signup. So you become a member, right? And then you get access to reserve certain tee times, just like if you were going in and down at the muni, reserving a tee time, it would be something very similar that you would experience with our business model.
Yeah, so I think as this, this like side of the golf industry has grown, a lot of software companies have, have grown, have, have developed as well to kind of support this membership, you know, access control model of businesses that are, that have, that have grown throughout the country over the last four years. And so like Dan said, there's basically a suite of software, companies that provide software for the booking. So someone would book online, book an hour tee time, and then fifteen minutes before their tee time starts, they would get access via their phone. There's an app on their phone that they would get access to, that they, that would then give them access to the lock that is also provided through one of these companies. They can all integrate with one another, so they can get access fifteen minutes before their time. We'll log via the cameras. It'll actually record that entry with a camera. We can look at who, who is actually in. So if somebody tried to bring in multiple friends or whatever it may be, we can, we can actually detect that as it happens. And so the nice thing is, is there's, there's service providers that provide this, this kind of remote access control and digital access control, which is really nice. And it gives us a lot of oversight into who, who's coming in the building. And also just another thing to call out, I think as part of our membership agreement, so each member that joins our club will have to agree to a membership with, you know, terms of use and things like that, in terms of if they break policy of bringing someone else or kind of bringing in people they shouldn't or who aren't members and maybe using the space in a way that they shouldn't, will have conditions where, you know, they'll be liable or lose their, their membership for those types of things. So hopefully that will help keep that in check as well.
So are members allowed to bring guests?
So part of our model is we really want to keep this as a member-only space, because again, we're very concerned about, you know, making sure that we're providing a secure place for our other tenants in the building as well. We just don't want anyone coming that we don't know. And so again, if there's new people that would like to come, if it is like a group thing, right, that would have to be with Josh or, or I or, or another member of our team. But outside of that, it would be very much member-driven, and you.
Yeah, I think any guest that would come would have to be registered kind of ahead of time. So if, if, you know, Dan was a member and he wanted to bring me along, I would register online, through the website, just to like record kind of who's, who's coming in and out. This is pretty similar. There's, there's a couple of these in Orange County, and like I said, many throughout the country, and you see them do it different ways. But that's kind of the, the way that we want to approach this, just to make sure, you know, we have control over that space. And then even for non-member, like, we do plan to allow some people to book, you know, that, without maybe having a full membership, but a same type of thing. They'd have to register online, book the time, and we'd be aware. And then in those cases, a, a staff member would be there.
How long would you anticipate it takes to play around, let's say, at Pebble Beach?
Yeah.
Great choice, bud.
That's a great, that's a great one. And it, you can actually, I can't remember. You can play eighteen, I think, in under thirty minutes by yourself.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. It seems to me, how would, at Topgolf, how many people, are you familiar with their operation?
Yeah.
What percentage of people is kind of like, I'll say, call it a social gathering versus, hey, I'm here to practice golf?
Yeah.
Because you guys are, you guys are representing that it's, hey, I'm going to go down and put my head down and work on my, you know, keeping my arms straight or whatever. But I would think if, if, if you have, golf is a very social event, and like you said, in groups of four, and if you have access to go play all the top courses in the world on Del Mar, or, you know, Australia, whatever, right? It seems like, hey, like, guys, let's go play Pebble Beach, and then you're going to have a foursome, and I don't know how long that's going to take. So can you, can you address that, and relative to the Topgolf, like, what percentage is group versus individual?
Yeah, I can speak to that first, but I'll let Dan speak to this as well. I think, so the difference, I think, between something like a Topgolf and what we're trying to do is, Topgolf is kind of built around the social aspect with food and alcohol and, and beverages and, and that type of environment, where we're kind of intentionally not going that route, because our core customer is actually more of a, you know, a golfer that's trying to improve their game versus just kind of going and, and just having a good time with, with friends, generally speaking. Because I think if you look at traditional golf practice, your other option is to go to the driving range. That's only open a certain amount of time throughout the day. And then if you've ever been to one recently, you'll, you'll find that they're always very busy. There, there, there's always tons of people there. And then you're, you're having to hit off of, you know, like terrible mats, you're hitting range balls that are losing twenty-five percent on average of your distance, and you can't even really see how far the ball's going. And so our, our core user is, is more of a golfer that's looking to improve their game. This type of technology that we use in our simulator has been available to, to professional golfers for, for a long time, but just over the last few years, it's become more commercially available to like a retail golfer. And so our core customer is, is more catered to that use case. And there are businesses like ours that are indoor simulators that are more catered to the entertainment aspect, more similar to a Topgolf. But again, they offer, you know, a bar, food, and really like build their business around that type of model, where ours is maybe catered, trying to fit a need that is, is less about the entertainment and more, more about, you know, getting some time in and getting better, using that time more efficiently.
Yeah. And with that said, though, I think the indoor simulator experience also offers an opportunity for those that aren't, let's say, very comfortable with going out and playing eighteen, to become familiar with the game. So we've actually seen, there's actually a large percentage of golfers that use indoor simulators that don't actually go out on the golf course. So we see it as an opportunity to, to create a place in San Clemente where even new golfers can come and experience and hopefully get a love of the game that we have. And again, we'll offer, you know, opportunities to get coaching if, if needed. So we see it, yes, definitely targeted toward that demographic of, I, I want to learn, you know, how to stop slicing, or I, I really want to get distance control. But we also see it as an opportunity for those who want to get into the sport, to come and find a safe environment where they can feel like they can practice.
Okay, so just to confirm, it's the scheduling software and you guys, or whoever's there, that limit the number of people that can come in at any given time?
Correct.
And you're, you're comfortable that that's going to work?
Yeah, yeah. This type of, like I said, I think this, this exact kind of business model has been implemented in, in indoor simulators kind of throughout the country. And so we feel pretty confident that this works. We've used it in other, in other simulators, in Utah and other places, as well as, as here in Southern California.
Yeah, and we've done extensive research across the country in pretty much the, the major hubs, and a lot of the indoor simulators are using this type of approach, because again, it offers flexibility to people who have a very busy life. But it adds the added benefit of really securing who can come, who can play, which is great.
Thank you.
Gary, questions? Bart, questions? Okay. Let me just talk with you guys kind of directly.
Sure.
We've got, you've got a conditional use permit, right? So some of the, there's conditions?
Yep.
Okay. Seven point eight says that you agree that you're going to do noise attenuation, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Have you been, you've been to these, so you know they are noisy. And you've got the actual opposite use next to you, a massage therapy where quiet and peacefulness and calm is sort of what they're selling. And then you guys are having this whack. So talk to me about what you're going to do to be a good neighbor and regarding the noise.
So I'll address the relationship that we're starting to build.
Okay.
First, and then Josh, if you want to talk about more of the specifics around what we're going to do. The first thing we did when we leased the space is we talked to each of the owners, the flower shop and also the Thai massage. And, you know, we said, first and foremost, like, for, for you, our number one focus is that you, your business will not be disturbed. And so even before we go live, like, that's going to be our focus, to make sure that we're working with them, to, to, to ensure that the appropriate sound levels of our business model meet their needs. And so I think that's our commitment to, to you as well, that we will take that forward as we've already done. And, and the one benefit on the, the Thai massage place is, as John's called out in his report, that the, the actual massage suites are not on that adjoining wall, which is very lucky for us. It's on the adjacent wall, which, again, allows us to further separate the noise us from them. And Josh, if you want to talk about the specifics that we're talking about?
Yeah, there's a few key measures, I think we're going to, that we plan to take in terms of the sound attenuation. So along that, the wall shared with the Thai massage, even though there, the, the massage rooms are actually on the other side of, of that suite, we still plan to build a non-structural, insulated wall with an air gap between those, that wall, just to create even more space. And then we'll actually layer that as well with, with like a, a soundproof, like a, a sound attenuating barrier even on, on that wall.
Okay, great.
And then on the floor, to, to address the floor and the, the flower shop below, same thing. We plan to do, on top of the subfloor, we plan to do a, a carpet underlayment, a pretty thick, sound attenuating, very specific for sound, underlayment for that. And then, so those two things are probably the biggest measures that we plan to take. But then in addition, each, each hitting bay, they, these companies have done a pretty good job of, of kind of keeping the sound contained within the bay. That the screens that you, that users will hit into is, is actually, it deadens the sound quite a bit, so the impact is actually quite soft. And we have a, a report provided by.
It's more the club strike on the ball, I think.
Exactly, at that point of impact on the ball, that like tink, it's very, it's like a spike.
Yeah.
But luckily, the way that those are built, it, it kind of contains some of that sound. But even with that, we want to be super cautious and make sure we're doing everything we can to keep that.
I just want to make sure you know that it's your responsibility and the city's going to come on, knock on your door if there's issues, and it's on you to make it right.
Yeah, we feel good about all those.
Seven point.
Chair Cosgrove, sorry to interrupt, and I know we're probably still have questions, but I noticed there was a member in the audience, so I want to make sure we do have time for public comments.
We'll, we'll ask if she wants to. Seven point nine does say that you're going to restrict events till after 5:00 PM. So we're on the same page on that.
Yep.
And then seven point ten says that from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, there shall be not more than eight customers on site. So what, can you, can you walk me through that one? There, there, there won't be more than eight. I think what we're concerned about is the parking, and you're kind of representing that you're going to have more or less from eight to five, you're going to only probably have one customer. So.
Well, two, one per, because they can be used simultaneously, so one person per, so I, we suspect two.
Yeah. And that would fit with the parking profile. It's, I think the concerns of my colleagues is if you're going to have, you know, eight people coming to park at prime time in the center.
Yeah.
So is it your intent to really limit it to the one member per bay, you know, during the peak hours? Is it that, that sort of your operating model?
Yes, I'd say so.
Yeah, we haven't specifically like restricted the scheduling at this point.
I don't think we're opposed, I, I think if, if we fully anticipate like that it would be small numbers, particularly during that time of day. We feel pretty confident that, that that would be the case. And we kind of wanted to address that with any size, any size, small group size would happen after 5:00 PM. But like Dan said, we aren't taking any, you know, hard measures to restrict it in the booking software or anything, that it has to only be one per bay.
Okay.
But that is something that we can address and limit in the future, if we want to say, hey, between eight to five, we're only going to allow maximum of two people per.
Mm-hmm, you're open to that?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay.
I think we're definitely, again, we're open to working with you and making sure that this is the best experience for us, but also for the.
Sure, sure.
The residents.
That's fair. Well, I appreciate you guys being flexible on that.
Yeah.
Great. I have no questions, or for the applicant, does anyone else has a follow-up before we say thank you? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
So our audience member, are they here for this item? No, okay. All right, shall we move to commission discussion?
Can you close the hearing?
Yeah. If we're ready for that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and, let's see, what do we have here? Oh, okay.
Chair, that's a late public comment.
You know what we're willing to do? We'll, as soon as we get done with this item, we'll be happy to take your comments.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, couldn't hear John.
That's okay. We're, we don't, we don't have a lot going on after this, so you're more than welcome to. Agenda-wise, okay. So I'll close the public hearing. So I'll close the public hearing. Are there comments and discussion?
I like the fact that they're willing to limit the patrons between the hours of eight and five. That center's packed between eight and five. So I think that should be, I'm going to, I'm for the, you know, approval of CUP with that addition, I think we need to have.
Limited to what?
Okay, so.
What they said, two per bay, right? That's, I mean, they had five spaces available to them.
What you're proposing is that we modify condition seven point one zero, that from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, there shall not be more than two customers on site.
Yeah, because I go for PT at five, 5:30, and there's plenty of parking.
Okay.
Can we say this out on Monday through Friday? On Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
Fair. And do you want to make it two, or you want to do, what's your number? Is it two or is it?
Well, they have five spaces, so if we have two per bay.
They could probably go to two people per bay then at the max.
Two per bay.
Okay, so four, total four. Okay.
Let me throw in my comment, because I think it's kind of unfair to limit them, because if you look at, look at Fratello's, if you look at Fratello's and the sushi place, they have seventy-two parking spaces, right? But if you look at the square feet, the center's about sixty-three thousand square feet. Fratello's takes up one-tenth, ten percent of that center, but they have fifty percent of the parking spaces. So I'll vote against anything that really limits these guys when we're talking about one or two.
That's not a fair comparison, because.
I think it is.
Well, Fratello's is evening, I mean.
No, Fratello's, they're, they're open for lunch.
Yeah, but all their, most of their business is in the evening. And after 5:00 PM, that center opens up significantly. I just don't think that's a fair.
Well, after 5:00 PM, what?
I mean, they're willing to make the, oh, whatever.
Yeah, because I think they're going to manage it anyways without having any kind of number on it. They've got a computer system that they can tell where Fratello's doesn't, they'll just take anybody that comes in, they just get to keep coming, coming. And I think, I don't know how Fratello's got in there, I don't know if it was a conditional use permit, but they get to, these guys have to pay the price because they get to sop up all the parking. Fifty percent of the parking, and they only take up ten percent of the, it's really made as an office building, but we got two restaurants in there. So I'm for just leaving it how the staff has it, without giving them any, you know, excess baggage, how to operate their business, when that would really be in the respect that they're having to do that because Fratello's and the sushi place have an inordinate number of parking spaces.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is.
Leave it, leave it how staff has it. They already know they've got to watch, they've got to watch it.
Yeah, I think it's more about protecting the other tenants and penalizing.
Well, then you're going to have to have somebody down there from the city looking to see if they, are you going to have an auditor audit their computer books?
Well, enforcement is a whole different issue.
I know, so don't do it. I mean, just let it run. If somebody complains, then you will kind of come back to it.
Yeah, but they've said that they can limit the number with the software and the schedule.
But would Fratello's want to limit, give up some of their sixty-two spaces?
We're not approving Fratello's here tonight.
Right, I know, but we have to work, we have to look at the whole enchilada.
I thought they had lasagna.
Can I weigh in on this for a minute?
Yeah.
I think as a practical matter, as a practical matter, if people are going to play as a foursome, they're not going to do it Monday through Friday during business hours. You know, it's going to be after hours or whatever. So I think it's.
Self-limiting.
Probably kind of moot.
Most people probably were.
Yeah, I mean, you're not going to say, hey buddies, let's go and at 2:00 PM, for the most part. I mean, you know, occasionally, but it'll be like, hey, yeah, let's 7:00 PM, we got it seven to nine, we're going to play Pebble Beach, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
That's my two cents.
Okay. And the other discussion? So concerns about parking, we've got kind of different options before us, we can modify the resolution, or we can go with staff recommendations. I'm open to my colleagues.
I'd make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Second?
All right, we've got a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Let me just make sure I understand that. So we've got, let me just get to that. Okay, so we've got the determination that it's categorically exempt, and then your motion is the resolution and with the conditions as, as is, no changes.
Right.
And it's been seconded. Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Commissioner Crandall, you want to discuss for discussion?
I do have a question on the conditions of approval, the operational conditions of approval on, there's a typo on seven point nine. League tournaments and corporate events shall to occur, strike two. And then.
Sure.
Jonathan, we use some different verbiage in this, these conditions than we did on your previous one, by saying applicant understands and agrees, or applicant understands and acknowledges. Is this something new we're going to be doing, or that's not how we typically have?
We're referring to condition seven point eight or another one in particular.
Oh, sure. Let's just take seven point seven. The applicant understands and agrees that no windows, yada, yada, yada. But then on the one, seven point six, it says the applicant understands and acknowledges. What's the difference and why do we have the difference? And normally, it's they shall, and we don't go through that whole.
Agree and acknowledge.
Yeah.
It's either you will or you won't.
I mean, is that something that they've been instructed to do now, or is?
There hasn't been a recent change, so if you indulge me a moment to take a look at our standard conditions to make sure that there is consistency there. If there's not, then that's something that we'll just want to update our standard conditions to align.
I think we need to at least be consistent within each application, if not all applications matching, and how we. There's another one on that one. The applicant shall be responsible for ensuring, well, that would work for all of them. We've got four different ways of saying the same thing. Regarding, I know you made a motion, but regarding the sound transmission, who's evaluating the construction detailing of that? Because it sounded a little vague. I'm not saying we should, but I think we need to have something in place because most of that sound comes over the top of those walls. And the fact that they're on the second floor, you know, it's going to, if they're just attenuating that space, the same concern arises. I don't know what the code requirement is between office spaces, I know residential and the STC ratings and impact ratings, but there must be a standard for offices also, and that would be building enforced, building department enforced.
It says as determined by the city planner and our city building official. So they've got to get approval from the planner or the building official of what their sound.
In our municipal code, section eight point four eight, which I don't have in front of me.
Right, that's the.
Well, I'm comfortable with the building officials, nope. I don't think the planners qualified to evaluate that, but, no, all they can do would be quote an STC rating, and the building's going to have to figure out how they meet it at an impact rating. I don't know if there's something we can add to if we need to. Because of that high-impact noise, it's like a ball hitting the wall almost.
It's loud.
Well, I'm more concerned actually about the club head.
Yeah.
The club hit, hitting the mat, so it should really be, they're hitting from the small, is the hitting mat actually raised up off the main floor, up on a slight platform?
Yeah, there's, there's about a three-inch platform that the bay is built on, so that the hitting area is on top of a platform, the platform sits on the subfloor.
That might stop that impact.
Between that platform and the, and the subfloor will have an underlayment that goes underneath the whole floor, including under the.
Okay.
Yeah, that was kind of my questioning of them, that they understand that if their neighbors are complaining to the city, and the city has to take an enforcement action, that the weight of that action is the actual pulling of their use permit. So they're going to have to resolve it to be compliant. And I'm seeing that, you understand that, you guys are willing to be that kind of, you know, respond, take that level of responsibility. So that's kind of a good faith agreement on both sides, I think. But if there's more specificity we can do, I'm open to it. Okay. Jonathan, did you have any response to Commissioner Crandall yet?
I guess those were custom conditions created, so I think that direction from the council to just modify each of those to remove language that uses terms like acknowledges or aware, and convert that to shall and must is appropriate. We'll make those modifications in the resolution that gets brought back.
Okay, so is the maker of the motion amenable to that inclusion?
Yes.
Okay, and the second?
The second does.
Great. Eileen, are you okay with that? Okay, fantastic. All right, is there any further discussion on this item? All right, I'm going to ask, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, because I think we should limit the number of parking.
Okay, fair enough. So that passes three to one with Vice Chair Camp being the no.
Four to one.
Three to one, right? No, four to one, yeah, four to one, sorry. Yeah, four to one. Okay, so congratulations, your permit within ten days, ten pages of appeal, then it will be permitted to you, granted. So congratulations. Thank you. Good luck to you in your business, and welcome to San Clemente.
Thank you.
Okay. If you, if my colleagues will indulge our citizen, we do have a request under public comment on a non-agenda item to address the commission, so if my colleagues will be okay with that, I will invite Patricia Holloway up to the podium for her three minutes to make her public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate you letting me speak.
I'm just going to reset the timer here.
Oh, okay, of course.
Go ahead, you're welcome, thanks for, thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you. San Clemente became a Tree City USA for the first time on Arbor Day 2023. This designation must be renewed annually by updating the prior year's application and by planting trees on Arbor Day. This year, the city will celebrate Arbor Day with a tree planting ceremony on Saturday, April 27th, from nine till noon at Jim Johnson Memorial Park, and that's right next to Shorecliff, and you access it off Avenue de Vista Hermosa. The city intends to plant some California native trees to provide additional shade at the park. City staff will be joined by the San Clemente Garden Club, Sunrise Rotary, San Clemente Rotary, and Citizens Climate Education, who are providing donations and volunteers for the event. So far, these groups have raised forty-two hundred dollars for tree planting. City landscape crews will purchase the trees and do the major digging, and volunteers will backfill the holes with soil and will fertilize and water. Bring your gloves, hats, and shovels if you want to play in the dirt, or just come out with your family and enjoy a spring morning. Currently, the city maintains approximately fifteen thousand trees on public property, and this includes our street trees, park trees, and trees at city facilities like the community center and city hall here and Casa Romanica. However, if you look at our 2018 city tree policy, in that policy, it indicated that the city maintained nineteen thousand trees at that time. If these numbers are correct, it means we've lost four thousand public trees during the past six years, or over six hundred and sixty trees a year. It's vitally important that we reverse this trend and commit to replacing trees in San Clemente lost to disease, severe weather and development. Canopy trees offer us so many benefits, shade, they absorb carbon, prevent erosion, retain soil moisture, create bird and wildlife habitat, and of course, beautify our town, just as Ollie Hanson envisioned. Please join us on Arbor Day, April 27th, and when the annual budget comes around, please think of the trees. Thank you.
Thank you for all that information about that great public event. Okay. Item number nine is new business. Do we have any new business, Jonathan? No. Item 10, old business, none. Item 11 is reports of commissioners and staff. Do we have any reports?
I do have one thing to note for the commission. I sent an email earlier, but we have two points of training opportunity. The first is at the end of May, and I believe it's May 28th through June 1st, the California Preservation Conference will be in Los Angeles. And as a part of the city's certification as a local government program under the California Office of Historic Preservation, our commission is required to report annually involvement in training that relates to that particular field. So it's a great opportunity. There's different ways that we can accomplish that, but this would be a great opportunity if you have interest. And we do have available training budget specifically for the planning commission, so if any of you would be interested in that, please let me or Meredith know, and we would love to get you registered for that. Related, we also have a line item that can be used just for training here, and we have some open study sessions before the July 1st end of the fiscal year. So I'd love to bring in any trainings that you have interest in. So if there's a specific topic area, sequo, architecture, other topics that could be of interest, please let me know, and we'll look at bringing in someone who could provide a presentation during a study session ahead of one of the regular meetings. That's all I have for today.
Okay, great. Does any commissioner have any reports they want to make?
I saw a report, but we were asked to continue this public hearing project at Sea Cliff Hotel and Restaurant. What is, what is it that we're waiting on?
Yeah. Yeah, so in this case, staff was attempting to proactively plan this out ahead. This is a project that's been through several iterations through design review a couple of times, and so we identified tonight is the earliest potential date that that could go to a public hearing. However, there's a couple things that need to be finalized before that public hearing, but before good discussion can occur on that public hearing. One of those is water quality management plans, so this is a state mandate that water quality management plans be approved when required prior to the public hearing. And we have a third party that reviews those in detail, and this particular plan has some additional corrections that have to be made. So the applicant has been made aware of those, and the other is similar, but from OCFA. So OCFA has indicated they're not ready to issue conditions yet because there are a couple of items remaining on their site plan that need to be addressed before that can proceed. So those are the two things that we're looking to get addressed in the next month before the April 17th public hearing.
Commissioner McCann.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Eileen again for everything she's done. I mean, it's, it would be impossible to count all of the late nights and, you know, tense moments, I'm sure, and frustrations and everything, but you'll be greatly missed. So thank you for all your service and enjoy your grandbabies.
I think he speaks for us all. Does anyone else have any other reports or comments? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move that we adjourn. What's that? Yep, okay. That we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the planning commission for Wednesday, April 17th, 2024, 6:00 PM, San Clemente City Hall, Council Chambers. Do I have second to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.